Yet shall he live, and whosoever liveth and believeth in me shall never die. The eternal God is thy refuge, and underneath are the everlasting arms. The Lord is my light and my salvation. Whom shall I fear? The Lord is the strength of my life, of whom shall I be afraid? The righteous live forever, and the care of them is with the Most High. And with His right hand He shall cover them, and with His arms shall He shield them. For we know that if our earthly house of this tabernacle were dissolved, we have a building of God, a house not made with hands, eternal in the heavens. And I saw a new heaven and a new earth, for the first heaven and the first earth were passed away. And I, John, saw the holy city, New Jerusalem, coming down from God out of heaven, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband. And I heard a great voice out of heaven saying, Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men, and He will dwell with them, and God Himself shall be with them and be their God. And God shall wipe away all tears from their eyes, and there shall be no more death, neither sorrow, nor crying; neither shall there be any more pain, for the former things have passed away. And there shall be no light there, and no need of candle, neither light of the sun; for the Lord God giveth them light, and they shall reign forever and ever. Now I saw a new heaven and a new earth, for the first heaven and the first earth had passed away. Also, there were no more sea. Then I, John, saw the holy city, New Jerusalem, coming down of heaven from God, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband. And I heard a loud voice from heaven saying, Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men, and He will dwell with them, and they shall be His people. God Himself will be with them and be their God. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes, and there will be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying; there shall be no more pain, for the former things have passed away. Then he who sat on the throne said, Behold, I made all things new. And he said to me, Right, for these words are true and faithful. And he said to me, It is done. I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end. I will give of the fountain of water of life freely to him who thirsts. He who overcomes shall inherit all things, and I will be his God, and he will be my Son. For we believe that Jesus died and rose again. And so we believe that God will bring with Jesus those who have fallen asleep in Him. According to the Lord's Word, we tell you that we who are still alive, who are left until the coming of the Lord, will certainly not perceive those who have fallen asleep. For the Lord Himself will come down from heaven with a loud command, with the voice of the archangel, and with the triumph call of God. And the dead in Christ will rise first. And after that, we who are still alive and are left will be caught up together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air. And so we will be with the Lord forever. To everything there is a season, and a time to every purpose under the heaven, a time to be born, and a time to die, a time to plant, and a time to pluck up that which is planted, a time to kill, and a time to heal, a time to break down, and a time to build up, a time to weep, and a time to laugh, a time to mourn, and a time to dance, a time to cast away stones, and a time to gather stones together, a time to embrace, and a time to refrain from embracing, a time to get, and a time to lose, a time to keep, and a time to cast away, a time to rent, and a time to sow, a time to keep silent, and a time to speak, a time to love, and a time to hate, a time of war, and a time of peace. What profit hath He worked in whenever He labored? I have seen trials which God hath given to the sons of men to be exercised in. Jesus said, I am the resurrection and the light. He that believeth in Me, though he were dead, yet shall he live; and whosoever liveth and believeth in Me shall never die. The eternal God is thy refuge, and underneath are the everlasting arms. The Lord is my light and my salvation. Whom shall I fear? The Lord is the strength of my life, of whom shall I be afraid? In your presence, Lord. Is where. We must be. Wanna be, wanna be, wanna be, gotta be in your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. In your presence, Lord. Is where. Is where. We must be. Wanna see your face in your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. In your presence. In your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. Wanna be, gotta be in your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. In the holy, your holy places, in your presence. In your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. In your presence, Lord. In your presence. In your presence. Is where. Is where. We must be. In your presence is where we must be. Amen. Our prayer of comfort, the Reverend Johnny May Law. Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, God who is our refuge and our strength in times of trouble. We come before your presence in the name of Jesus. We come lifting our hearts in praise to you because through it all, we still have joy. And through it all, you get all the honor and all the glory. We thank you for allowing us to gather here today to celebrate a life of one who meant so much to so many. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, God, for your presence and the hope you continue to give in times like these. Holy Spirit, Holy Spirit, comfort this family right now, for you alone are able to wipe away the hurt, the tears, and the pain. Wrap your loving arms around this family and these friends. Let them know that all their help comes from you. And you promised that you would never leave us or forsake us. Father, we thank you for your word today because your word reminds us that in our weakness, you would be our strength. So, Lord, I pray that you will become their strength in this time of loss, their hope in this time of bereavement, their joy in this time of sorrow, and their peace in the hurt their hearts must be facing. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, that the sting of death has been broken forever and the curse of the grave has been destroyed through the death and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Speak now, Lord, into the hearts of everyone who is mourning right now, and let them not mourn as those who have no hope. For no matter what pain we may suffer, we can always hold on to the hope that you have given us through Christ Jesus. Now, Lord, for those who do not know you and accept you as their Savior, who died for them, I pray that they will come to know you and accept you as their Savior, and that they will find peace, hallelujah, and rest in you. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen, amen, and amen. Amen. Our scripture readings, the Old Testament, Psalm 23, the Reverend Bergeron Miller, and the New Testament, 1 Corinthians 13, 11 through 13, the Reverend Dr. Kenneth Jordan, in that order, please.
Hello, everyone. I know this is a different occasion that we have come here to honor our great friend, our brother. And it is an honor to be before you. So I want to give honor to Ms. Jean and the Rivers family, all of his loved ones, all of our state and local officials, county officials, members of the clergy. And I especially want to give honor to God. And I've been given the grace to alter the scripture because I think this is what has really been fitting. And I was given the okay. I want to read Psalms 133. Very familiar passage for most of us, but I think it's something that Gator would have wanted us to resonate on. It reads, "Behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. It is like the precious ointment upon the head that ran down upon the beard, even Aaron's beard, that went down to the skirts of his garment, and the dew of Hermon; and as the dew that descended upon the mountains of Zion, for there the Lord commanded the blessing, even life forevermore." And I want to thank Ms. Jean for the grace to speak, a reflection from my heart. And I think it's something based on the scripture, and I'm not trying to preach, but I just really believe that if you look around and you see Gator's impact, you look and see faces of all colors, all races, all creeds. This goes back to when they won the '67 championship, when all of Savannah, white and black, came to celebrate him. And he fell into that vein the rest of his life as an ambassador with the Globetrotters. And on this very day where most of us were coming mourn, we are here to celebrate our brother, our friend, our husband, our loved one. And if there's anything any of you need to remember as you walk out of this place today, remember that we come together in unity, not about this issue or that issue, or this party or that party, or what side of town I've come from. It said, unity, that's where the blessing is. Unity doesn't mean we agree on everything. It means that we come together in agreement to move forward. So in honor of our good friend, Larry Gator Rivers, let's continue his legacy by coming together in unity and say, we're going to unify not just for this or that, but for the human race as one. Amen?
When I was a child, I spoke as a child. I understood as a child. I thought as a child. But when I became a man, I put away childish things. For now we see through a glass darkly. But then face to face, now I know in part. But then shall I know even also I am unknown. And now abide it, faith, hope, and love. These three. For the greatest of these three is love. The word of God, for the people of God, thanks be unto God.
Amen. We will now be blessed by a selection from the voices of praise.
I love you, Lord, for your mercies never failed me. All my days I've been held in your hands. From the moment that I wake up until I lay my head, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. 'Cause all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I love your voice. You have led me through the fire. In darkest nights, you are close like no other. I know you as a father. I know you as a friend. I have lived in the goodness of God. I have lived in the goodness of God. 'Cause all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. With my life laid down, I surrender now. I give you everything. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. With my life laid down, I surrender now. I give you everything. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. With my life laid down, I surrender now. I give you everything. Your goodness is running after, is running after me. 'Cause all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every step that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. 'Cause all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God.
The goodness of God. The goodness of God. It's now time for reflections. The family has asked, and I know it's hard for most of us, to please do your best to keep your reflections to three minutes. Also, only the names that I call will be allowed to speak at this time. You will be welcomed at the repast if you need to give further remarks. First, and we would also like you to come up on the pulpit if at all possible, the Honorable Van Johnson, the mayor of Savannah, followed by Ms. Edna Branch Jackson, a Georgia state representative. Then a representative for Buddy Carter, U.S. Representative for Georgia, following Carter, the U.S. Representative for Georgia, alternate woman Linda Wilder-Bryan for the 3rd District. Then Commissioner Erin Whiteley from the 6th District for Chatham County. Then there would be a video tribute from David Hall. And then Bruce Sugarbear Caper will come, in that order, please.
Pastor Thurman, members of the clergy, to members of city council that are here, if you would stand. Any members of council here, so we recognize them as well. All the men, all the women, Wilder-Bryan. To this family that we love and we hope you feel the love. As the mayor of the greatest city on earth, I'm honored to give expressions about the life of one of the greatest lives that ever came from the greatest city on earth. This world-renowned legend from Savannah, Larry Gator Rivers. This amazing man who traveled the world, who showed his formidable skills in front of millions of people, was from right here in Savannah, Georgia. And when Savannah was a much different place, when black kids and white kids couldn't necessarily play in the same tournaments, this man teamed up with other young amazing men and shocked the entire Georgia basketball world. When in the first year of integration, or rather desegregation, won the Georgia High School Association's championship. I noticed somebody from Beach High School in this house today, right? Y'all better act like it. Amen. This amazing man was even on the Love Boat. And I'm going back on Hulu to try to find that episode when he was on the Love Boat. None of us have ever been on a Love Boat. This man could do amazing things with a ball, things that would leave us still scratching our heads. He was a guard. And the guard often runs offense. They're often the best dribbler, they're often the best passer, they're often the floor general. And he certainly was recognized and known for doing that on the court. But our testimony here in Savannah is a little different because he came back home to be a floor general on this field, to run the offense on this field, to be the best passer in this field, passing on to future generations not only the love of basketball, but the loving and embracing of life. He came home to inspire young people, to tell them they could do anything they wanted to do, and he could do it while spitting a basketball on his finger. He came home and wanted to do something about Crawford Square. And he would come and say, man, we gotta do something about Crawford Square. We gotta do something about Crawford Square. Well, we did something about Crawford Square because we cannot have Gator Rivers say, do something. We didn't do it. And we really looked at being able to find ways of creating sports as a way to improve people's lives. And yesterday in West Savannah, we were honored to cut the ribbon on the first full-size basketball court in the west side of Savannah. And we certainly invoked the name of Gator Rivers while we did it. I learned this summer, and I know I'm moving, I'm moving. I learned this summer that we have a special distinction in professional basketball because there are five Harlem Globetrotters and a coach that went from the same high school to the same professional team. I'm right, right? And so they're doing a documentary about that. And I'm asking this community, because Gator wanted it done, we started taping it. Ladies and gentlemen, let's do all we can to make sure that the story of these extraordinary young men are told, not only for our city, but for the entire world. Let's do that. And personally, I commit, as I told-
And we would sit in a meeting and he always had the basketball, and he'd put it up on that finger. And y'all know I can't do that. But he was such an artist at training our young people and doing all of those wonderful things and encouraging our young people through the Boys and Girls Club to get involved, to be somebody, to get your grades right while you're in this school. And of course, I am a proud graduate of Alfred E. Beach High School. Long before he graduated, I graduated in the class of '62. Like our mayor said, and most of the resolutions will read the same, I'm only going to read a part of it, so I won't be told that my time is up. Honoring the life and memories of Gator Rivers, and we did put Larry Gator Rivers. Let me read the latter part. It said, "Whereas, a passionate and generous man, Larry Gator Rivers, will long be remembered for his love of family, friendship, and community, and will be missed by all..." Was that my bell? "...for all who had the great fortune of knowing him. Now therefore, be it resolved that the life and memory of Larry Gator Rivers are honored and the deepest and most sincere regrets is expressed at his passage. Be it resolved that on the ninth day," and it was signed on yesterday of May, "by Edna Branch Jackson, the final copy I will get to you. But again, remember, Savannah is here for you and the family. Thank you for letting Gator be a part of all of our lives." Is the U.S. Representative?
Excuse me, sorry about that. Was unaware I was on the program. When Gator first got elected Commissioner, he came to the Congressman and sat down with him and saw his mentorship and his advice, and the Congressman really did appreciate him reaching out. And as a boy that also grew up in Savannah, went to Groves High School, he saw how much Gator wanted to help this community, help the youth, and we really enjoyed working with Gator over the last couple of years. He was always reaching out to our office, looking for one thing or another to give back, and we're really thankful for everything Gator gave to this community. The Congressman recognized Gator on the House floor last night, and we have a proclamation that we gave to his family tonight. So just wanna say thank you, Gator. The Congressman wishes he could be here to speak in person, but he had business in DC. Thank you all.
Those words are from Dr. Mildred Bahita McLean. She's not here, but I'm standing in her foot today. God bless her. Greetings, honored guests, Minister, church, family, and the Reverend Dr. Thurman. Lord have mercy. It is my belief, like Gator, that the power to unite is always stronger than the power to divide. Today, we celebrate love. Love for our servant brother, Commissioner Larry Gator Rivers. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for over five decades by way of my sister. He always reached back. Ricky Harris was a standout player at Savannah High, and because of him, he got a full ride at Missouri Western. He always gave back, pulled up, and aligned himself with greatness. And I know that because of Tyrone Hollywood Brown, Kevin Thunderbolt Sutton, Harold Bobo Hubbard, Bruce Sugarbear Capers, and Matt Showbiz Jackson. I don't even have to tell you how Gator got his name, because he would call you at night, put somebody else on the phone, say, "Wait a minute," and before you know it, you was talking to two other people. He was amazing. Thank you, Jean, for this opportunity. I love you. He was a force, a gentle giant, stubborn, assertive, goal-focused, an ambassador. He was determined to make a difference, and he did that for everybody. Lawrence and I have a nonprofit, it was LB4 and LB3, and you'd call Gator and he'd be everywhere. And you'd say, "Gator, where you at?" And he'd say, "Hold on, I got my ball in the car and my T-shirt, and I'm the main attraction anyway." And nobody was offended by that because he was the main attraction. He really was. And so before they get the hook and get me off, I wanna just tell you this. All he wanted to do was bounce that ball. That's all. Right here in Savannah. Looking out today is a testament of that outpouring of love that Gator put out for everybody. It is my belief in the mayors that we give people their flowers when they can smell them and touch them and feel them and say, "Thank you." Let me hear y'all say, "Thank you, Gator." And so from a word from the mayor, who always says, "A personal privilege," I want y'all to stand up. Please allow me that, just stand up. And we always offer silence. Reverend Thurman, we're not gonna tear your house down, but I want y'all to clap for him and thank him for the work that he did. And this... So, last thing I have to say, that the heavens have opened up today to allow the chariot that takes our friend to the pearly gates. So when you hear that thunder in the sky for 56 years, since 1967, so if you add five and six, you get what? You get what? You get what? And that's his number. So I bring you greetings, I bring you love from the mighty 3rd District where he lived. God bless you all and keep you all. Continue to watch God be God.
My name is David Hall, President of the University of the Virgin Islands. I have lost a dear teammate, friend, and magic man from my life. I was blessed to be part of a historic journey in 1967, when Beach High School won the state basketball championship. The first year, the Athletic Conference in the state of Georgia was integrated. Every player on that history-making team was special, and all of them, including the coaches and managers, played a role in our success. Of course, Larry Gator Rivers was certainly a unique contributor to the team's success. He was voted Sixth Man of the Year, and he embraced that role with pride. He enjoyed coming into the game and bringing excitement and a big lift when the team needed it. He could dribble, shoot, and defend with the best players in the state, if not the country. One of my most memorable moments occurred on the day that the team left Savannah to play in the state championship in Atlanta. All of the players and coaches were there boarding the Nancy Hanks train on this historic journey. Yet Gator was nowhere to be found. He missed the train, and we were all concerned about a team without our sixth man. Later that day, as the team practiced in Atlanta, Gator walked into the gym with a bright smile on his face after having taken a bus by himself. We were all relieved to know that our special ingredient was in the mix. Gator's smile was as constant as the sun. In addition to his outstanding play on the court, his off-the-court stories, jokes, and laughter kept us all loose, ready to play, and made us feel like brothers. Gator could do things with the basketball that no one could do. He could dribble and spin it on his fingers as if the ball and him were one, and they were. Later, playing for the phenomenal Harlem Globetrotters, who we all grew up admiring, was such a natural fit for him. The magic man had found his home and followed in the tradition of Curly Neal and Metallo Lemon. He played, coached, and served as an ambassador for the organization and former players for many years. He was the force behind encouraging our championship coach, Russell Ellington, to coach the Globetrotters. Some talented players allowed basketball to define their lives. Larry allowed basketball to propel his life. He used it as a career, but also as a tool to mentor and inspire youth. His work on the court and off helped ensure his election as County Commissioner. He was greater than the sport he played, but never forgot how well he and so many others at Beach played the game. I will miss my friend, brother, and teammate. No matter where he was or where I was, Gator would find me and bring his laughter and excitement with him. I text and talk to him during what turned out to be his final months on earth. He was confident, faithful, and full of joy, as he always had been. He would end his text message by still referring to me as, and I quote, "My captain." One of my greatest honors in my life was to be a member and co-captain of the 1967 championship team. Many of the team members have passed away now, especially those who were starters and key reserves. But I am still honored to captain a team made up of so many special players and coaches, and Larry Gator Rivers was clearly a special member and brother. And though he has transitioned from this stage of his existence, the spirit that created that championship moment and created him will never die. So on behalf of the members of that championship team, I convey our deepest sympathy and prayers to his wife and family. May God bless you as God blessed the life of Larry Gator Rivers. Thank you.
Good evening. I bring greetings on behalf of the Chairman of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, the Honorable Chester A. Ellis, as well as the Chatham County Board of Commissioners. If you would, colleagues, please rise to be recognized. Now the Commission sends our deepest and sincerest condolences and prayers of peace, comfort, and solace to you, the Rivers family, the friends. You could always tell if somebody's genuine, who shows up for them. So I wanna ask everybody, just look around, all right? It's a smorgasbord of all kind of people, movers and shakers, hoopers, leaders, and Gator epitomizes that. Gator brought us all together, and that shows you how genuine of a person he was. Now, I'm gonna read this proclamation. I got played off by that video. I'm sure Gator's laughing at me, saying, "Hey, they didn't want you to speak, juh? They didn't want you to talk, juh?" Well, I'll read a proclamation on behalf of the Commission. Whereas the Chatham County Board of Commissioners and citizens of this community lost a valued leader, basketball legend, and coach on April 29, 2023, with the death of Commissioner Larry Gator Rivers, leaving a huge void in the Chatham County community. And whereas Larry Gator Rivers, affectionately known as Gator, was a native Savanian and a class of 1969 graduate of Alfred E. Beach High School, and later attended Missouri Western State College, now known as Missouri Western State University. And whereas Larry Gator Rivers developed his passion for basketball on the courts of Savannah's Crawford Square and continued to hone the sport at Alfred E. Beach High School, leading the first all-black team to win a Georgia High School Association championship during their first season of integration, ultimately winning three state titles. And whereas in 1973, Larry Gator Rivers began his legendary basketball career with the Harlem Globetrotters after making a lasting impression on them. And for 16 years, he played with them and served as a coach. And whereas he served as a valued mentor for countless youth, teaching them about life and the art of basketball, Larry Gator Rivers gave many years of dedicated volunteer service to benefit the youth and his community through the Frank Callen Boys and Girls Club, basketball training camps, and other youth programs. Whereas his desire to continue to serve and improve his community led him to run for the Commissioner of the 2nd District and was sworn into office on January 2021, where he continued to work to improve recreational programs. Now therefore, I, Erin Whitley, on behalf of the Honorable Chester A. Ellis, Chairman on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby express heartfelt sympathy to the family of Larry Gator Rivers.
I bring greetings on behalf of the chairman of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, the Honorable Chester A. Ellis, as well as the Chatham County Board of Commissioners. If you would, colleagues, please rise to be recognized. Now, the commission sends our deepest and sincerest condolences and prayers of peace, comfort, and solace to you, the Rivers family, the friends. You could always tell if somebody's genuine, who shows up for them. So I want to ask everybody, just look around, alright? It's a smorgasbord of all kind of people, movers and shakers, hoopers, leaders. And Gator epitomizes that. Gator brought us all together, and that shows you how genuine of a person he was. Now, I'm going to read this proclamation. I got played off by that video. I'm sure Gator's laughing at me, saying, "Hey, they didn't want you to speak, dude. They didn't want you to talk, dude." Well, I'll read a proclamation on behalf of the commission. Whereas the Chatham County Board of Commissioners and citizens of this community lost a valued leader, basketball legend, and coach on April 29, 2023, with the death of Commissioner Larry Gator Rivers, leaving a huge void in the Chatham County community. And whereas Larry Gator Rivers, affectionately known as Gator, was a native Savanian and a class of 1969 graduate of Alfred E. Beach High School, and later attended Missouri Western State College, now known as Missouri Western State University. And whereas Larry Gator Rivers developed his passion for basketball on the courts of Savannah's Crawford Square and continued to hone the sport at Alfred E. Beach High School, leading the first all-black team to win a Georgia High School Association Championship during their first season of integration, ultimately winning three state titles. And whereas in 1973, Larry Gator Rivers began his legendary basketball career with the Harlem Globetrotters after making a lasting impression on them. And for 16 years, he played with them and served as a coach. And whereas he served as a valued mentor for countless youth, teaching them about life and the art of basketball, Larry Gator Rivers gave many years of dedicated volunteer service to benefit the youth and his community through the Frank Callen Boys and Girls Club, basketball training camps, and other youth programs. Whereas his desire to continue to serve and improve his community led him to run for the commissioner of the 2nd district and was sworn into office on January 2021, where he continued to work to improve recreational programs. Now therefore, I, Aaron Whiteley, on behalf of the Honorable Chester A. Ellis, chairman on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby express heartfelt sympathy to the family of Larry Gator Rivers and join with the community during the loss of a great basketball legend and a community leader. And I just want to say goodbye. I'm one of those guys he mentored. Goodbye to my friend, Gator. Goodbye to my colleague, Commissioner Larry Gator Rivers. Thank you.
Before I get started, the boss spoke and said the three minutes don't apply to me. So don't yank me off, please. But as he rose and rebuked the winds, he said unto the sea, "Peace be still." We living in challenging times, and often I retreat to some of my calming spaces where I find clarity, understanding, direction, purpose, and peace. While retreating last week, I had an opportunity to observe not just local, not just coastal, but global responses in magnitude in regards to the impact of this global goodwill ambassador to this world. So, searching for clarity, a young lady posts a picture, Sweet Lou, video of Gator sliding one of his dribbling routines. And you could see in the video, O.B. Dotson sitting over there, swinging the ball, moving around a couple of times. And then Sweet Lou, what he normally do to all us dribblers, when he give it to us, he say, "Lay it down. Lay it down." And that's what Gator did, laid it down. But what brought clarity to that was this grandmother stressing because this little boy took lessons from Gator Rivers. And she was stressing because he was in his new pants, walking on his knees like Gator Rivers. My response was, "Don't worry about those pants. I'll buy them, the next pair, when the hole get in there." Because what he has received from Gator was the blueprint. The blueprint. That's clarity. And then I saw a Facebook post by his stepdaughter in Missouri. And she basically said, "Gator gave me the blueprint from A to Z to make all, not some, all my dreams come true." She now leads one of the largest and most successful AAU programs in Missouri using the same blueprint. More profoundly, she said she now use the blueprint to raise her own family. And then I made one phone call that I thought Gator would want me to make. And it was to his daughter Laura. Did not know what I was walking into, but I said, "She answered the phone with such enthusiasm." I was blown back. And she said, "I said, 'How are you?'" She said, "Bruce, I'm good. My daddy help people all over the world." And what daughter wouldn't love that? So because she was so happy, I pushed the envelope a little bit. And I asked her, "What did you get from the blueprint?" And she said, "I remember first, he said, 'Follow through.'" It's like, wow. And then she say, "Number two, it's true for the shot." Am I right? It's true for the shot. And everything you do and reach challenges, it's true for the shot. And then she said, the last one she remembered, he said, "Start strong." But he said, "Watch the ball until it go all the way through the hoop." Because the next man have turned around, not knowing whether he made it or missed it. And then I start thinking, wow, there's a lot of irony to that. Because Laura went on to be an extraordinary volleyball player at Howard University following through. Today, using those same blueprint, she is a successful labor lawyer in Atlanta, Georgia. The same blueprint. And then I saw response from Hollywood Brown, Tyrone. Tyrone just kept it simple. Tyrone said, "The man is my hero." He basically understood that many of his opportunities would not have happened if Gator would not have come home and take him by the hand and gave him the blueprint. Tyrone turned around, gave the blueprint to Sugar Bear. And then after that, here come Kevin Suck, Showbiz Jackson, Ty Randolph, Chu Smith, all, all benefits of the blueprint. And then Sweet Lou, when he handed Gator that ball and said, "Lay it down," in that same video, Sweet Lou. And by the way, Sweet Lou will go down as one of the most greatest showmen in Harlem Globetrotter history. Also saw Sweet Lou on Love Boat the other day with Gator Rivers. They had about 20 of them in one cabin. Sweet Lou also have the distinction in that the Globetrotters is coming up on their 100th anniversary. And Sweet Lou has the distinction of being there all 100 years. And then I see Bobby over there. Bobby and Gator frickin' frat. Bobby and Gator created an assertive campaign about 10, 15 years ago to increase the Globetrotter membership for the National Basketball Retired Players Association. It's an organization of former NBA players, Globetrotters, WNBA players, and ABA players. The mission is to make life easier for us athletes as we transition into the real world. They created that campaign, and many of us jumped on board following Bobby and Gator. And while there, Dave Naves comes into the picture. And if you know Dave Naves' relationship with Gator, it's extraordinary. Dave Naves can retire today, but he's a profound, extremely important worker for NASA, and he still remains. Dave and I have in the camp before the pandemic hit to do STEM basketball camps, science, technology, engineering, and math, partly because Gator could take the ball and do a speech showing you how science, technology, engineering, and math applies to basketball. Dave goes on and sat on the board for the National Basketball Retired Players Association, supported by Gator and Bobby and so many others. Immediately, immediately, when he got on the board, the first thing he did was appointed Chu Smith to work on committees. Dave serves out his time. It's over. Now Chu became on the board. Well, just recently, Chu is a former Harlem Globetrotter who is launching something called Communiversity, where he's establishing universities in communities where everybody, from the youngest to great-grandma, can go learn something, take advantage of resources, and he's launching that. Chu went on to serve now not just on the board, but he's chairman of the board. And immediately upon being announced, the first thing he did was he reached out to Sugar Bear and put me on the committees. So now I'm on a committee. So guess what? The blueprint is alive and well, and we will carry it on. And then I got that call first. I'm going to look at my Globetrotters roster right here. I got that call from our living God, our Hebrew. When he speak, we all listen. And his name is Hebrew. He awesome. You know him as Gees. And Gees' conversation with me, I can't even begin to go in because it was emotional on both sides. But more importantly, outside of the emotion, he brought me peace with his words. Because he too and Gator have a long, long, long history. So with that being said, y'all, it brings me to the point of, what did Gator really want? What did he really, really want? And I can tell you, because he kept me up 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning every night telling me. But one of the things he wanted to do was bring that blueprint to Savannah and help so many young people with his blueprint. He wanted it right here because every place he been before, he laid down that blueprint and was successful. He came home and he simply wanted a selfie with 67 trophies. He couldn't find it. He couldn't find it. He finally found it, and his heart, I can tell you, was broken because the trophy was in five pieces. He understood history. He understood how history shaped our future. He felt that it was important that kids understand the importance of that 67 game. He just didn't want it to shine because he was on the team. He wanted it to shine because of its significance. He took the trophy, and I think he tried to repair it. He gave it to the powers-to-be. I don't know exactly who. But all of a sudden, trophy's not here no more. It's not here no more. So this campaign, I don't like to come talk without action plans. So I think all y'all should take out your phone. All y'all in the world listening, hashtag, "Where's the trophy?" All he wanted to do was to have the trophy enshrined so people can understand his significance. See, he understood history like George Santayana, the famous Spanish-American philosopher. He said, "If you don't remember your past, you're condemned to repeat it." You're condemned to repeat it, and that's both ways. He understood that. Because see, what he knew was, his whole thing started with a dream. And what made the dream came through was the guys before him on Crawford Square, the guys before him on Cam Park, and the guys before him at Bees. Well, we both also understood that even in my era, I had visual examples from visionary. So when I came on the scene, I immediately was buried in my mind the impact of Joe Green. I was buried in my mind the impact of Russell Ellington. I was buried in my mind the impact of David Hall. It was buried in my mind guys like Andrew Knowles. It was buried in my mind like Roger Moore. It was buried in my mind deep by the guy by the name of Larry Gator Rivers. And all he wanted for these young people today to see that same vision. He felt it was missing. He said, "The name on the front of the building wasn't enough." He said, "When kids walk through Beach High Hall, he say, "'Cause bare walls don't talk." He said he wanted them to walk through, and the first thing they see is images and memorabilia of Joe Green. He wanted images and memorabilia of Russell Ellington, of David Hall, of Andrew Knowles, and of course, Larry Gator Rivers. He wanted that. He didn't just want that for Beach. He wanted it for Johnson, and he wanted it for all the high schools because he understood its significance and the impact and the importance of the history. So I challenge you again. When those kids walk through those schools in this city, don't let those walls be hollow. Okay? From that blueprint, I coached basketball for 20 years, college level. And in those 20 years, I took that same blueprint and have produced over 150-some athletes that have gone on to play Division I, Division II, NAIA, overseas, and got about four of them right now scratching at the NBA, all from Gator Rivers' blueprint. So if it's working all over the world, it show need to work here in Savannah, Georgia. See, what we have is what I call the less-than-point-five percenters. Those are the people who put a roadblock in front of everything he tried to do. But he's not at the pearly gates because of that .5%. He's at the pearly gates because of the 99.5% of the responses to his real work in this society that we live in. See, what people, I hear a lot all the time, but people didn't realize that Gator was smart. Extremely smart, intelligent, visionary. I used to always try to one-up him because I knew how great he was. And I remember back in like 2002, I went and obtained my master's degree and focusing on biomechanics and exercise physiology. And one of the first things I did was, I said, "I gotta go to Gator because I got him. I got him." So I went and I started explaining and talking the knowledge about biomechanics, and he just said how he do. Yeah, that's pretty good. So the joke was on me. Because the next time he took me to a speaking engagement, he said, "These kids need to hear your story." So I went, and I went first, and I told my story. And when I went to sat down, it was time for the big dog to come up. And when he came up, he did my whole 15 classes of master program in a speech with a basketball. He taught my whole master's degree in 30 minutes. Impact, smart, and intelligent. So why I got my guy hold up right there at the pearly gates? I can just imagine his entry. Because y'all, what y'all don't know, that Larry Gator Rivers just joined God's heavenly Harlem Globetrotter Dream Team. Because see, what y'all don't know, that I know all them boys over there know, that Billy Ray, Gator mentored Billy Ray. And Billy Ray had this thing where he could catch the ball and hold it behind his back and sit there and wave at you like this. So I can imagine at the pearly gates, Billy Ray gonna be the first. So I can imagine at the pearly gates, Billy Ray gonna be the first person he see. And he gonna be standing there, and he gonna say, yo, Judge, come on in. And he gonna give him that ball, and I can see Gator sliding through the pearly gates. And when he slide, he liked to look at the girls in the stands. He slide through the pearly gates, and as he looked up there, he sees Laura, his mother, who started the dream by taking him to the old Star Theater to watch Go Man Go. And that's when he was introduced to Marcus Haynes and knew exactly what he wanted to do for the rest of his life. The journey continued walking from the Star Theater, and he saw an image in the showcase of a basketball and told his mom he had to have it. And his mom would actually play with him, and he would dribble the ball, and he loved it. And what he did was, he took that in his own mind and created magic. See, the ball is just an illusion that y'all talk about. It's the message behind the ball that's most important. So after Billy rode, he slide on in there, he gonna hop up, and there's Curly Neal sitting over there. He gonna slide over to Curly Neal, and they gonna give they dance like they always do. And he gonna hop up, and he gonna look up, and he gonna hear that loud pitch voice from Metal Lock Limb. Say, Gator, take that thing over here. And he gonna slide over that metal lock, and when he hopped up, he's gonna be amazed because what is he gonna see? He's gonna see Marcus Haynes, the man that started the dribbling. And there's hard to find, it's getting good now, but it's hard to find guys who can handle the ball better than Marcus Haynes and Larry Gator Rivers. Myself, Tyrone Hollywood Brown, Ty Randolph, we all tried to be better than all of them. I let them speak for myself, I never did it that good because Marcus Haynes and Larry Gator Rivers set the tone. So as he laid down with Marcus, and he slides to Marcus, and Marcus said, Gator, what I taught you, y'all well done. Y'all well done. Because ultimately, what you have done, if you've left the blueprint for the world, I just want Savannah, Georgia, and Beach High School to take that blueprint and not let it go in vain. Because when you look over there, we have good stewards of the blueprint. Good stewards of the blueprint. So before I walk off this stage, before I get pulled off. Oh, one more thing, please, go for it, y'all. I, hey, I gotta show y'all this. This is my tailor-made Larry Gator Rivers top. Check it out, y'all. Check it out. So Luke, I'm coming to you, baby. I'm coming to you. So one more time, I need you to say, Gator, lay it down. Lay it down, Gator.
We will now listen to the Alma mater. The Beach Alma Mater. Acknowledgements, Ms. Audrey Andrews.
Good evening. I'm going to just read a few of the ones that the family asked me to read. With sympathy in the loss of your husband, no time on earth is long enough to share with those we love. Nothing can prepare our hearts to say goodbye. May the sympathy of those who care about you and the precious memory of your husband help to comfort you at this time. My condolences, Jacqueline Seymour and family. Remembering their beautiful song, God gives every person their own unique song. It is one that will play their entire lifelong, though the love they gave and the gifts that they shared, through the memories they make and the dreams they dare. It is a song filled with beauty and day-to-day grace that plays until they see God face to face. A song that is heard in the heart, loud and clear, a song if we listen, we'll always hear. What a beautiful way to celebrate them, through the song they live. The song will carry you forever in your heart. Mayor Geraldine Miller from Mayville, South Carolina. We have several resolutions which I will not read, I will just acknowledge them. We have Beach High. Congressional Record from Honorable Earl Buddy Carter. We have one from the World Conference of Mayors, a joint resolution from the World Conference of Mayors and the Historic Black Towns and Settlements Alliance Incorporated in memory of the Honorable Harlem Globetrotter's legend Larry Gator Rivers. We also have one from the United States Senate from Reverend Raphael Warnock. And we have one from Second Ebenezer Missionary Baptist Church, a resolution of respect for Brother Larry Gator Rivers. Expression of thanks, with sincere appreciation, we, the family of Commissioner Larry Gator Rivers, wishes to thank you for your kindness during our time of sorrow. Perhaps you sent a lovely card or sat quietly in a chair. Perhaps you sent those flowers that we saw sitting there. Perhaps you spoke the kindest words as many friends could say. Perhaps you were not there at all, just thought of us today. Whatever you did to console our hearts, we thank you so much for whatever part. Thank you for keeping us in your thoughts and prayers. May God continue to bless you. A very special thank you, thank you to the Reverend Dr. Thurman and the St. Paul CME Church in the Southern Pallet. The repast will be held immediately following the service at the Ralph Mark Gilbert Civil Rights Museum at 460 Martin Luther King Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to thank the family, especially my sister Jean, for allowing me the privilege of serving as your presider for this occasion. The only thing I can always remember is my oldest grandson spinning a ball on his finger because he wanted to be Gator Rivers. We will now have a selection from the voices of praise. Following that, we'll have the words of comfort from our very own the Reverend Dr. DeAndre Thurman, Senior.
Let the church say amen.
God has spoken.
Let us bow in this. Gracious God, we thank you for who you are and for what you are. We thank you for the opportunity to gather on this day, to be in this place, oh God, and to one more time experience your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Lord, we thank you for the life of Brother Larry Gator Rivers. We thank you, oh God, for all that you are and all that you mean to us so that we can celebrate even in a time like this. So now bless your son and your servant, noint me afresh and anew, in the name of Jesus. Preach, Holy Ghost preach, and all who love God would say, amen. Do you mind giving God just one more hand clap of praise in this place? We are gathered here today to celebrate the life, the love, the legacy, and the bright light of Brother Larry Gator Rivers, and to thank our glorious and grand God for the high privilege of allowing our paths to cross with His in some way. Today, friends, not only do we seek to celebrate a journey completed, a life well-lived, a saint who has gone to be with his Savior, but also we come today to offer words of comfort to this beloved family and to this community. My prayer is that those that knew Brother Rivers as a husband, father, grandfather, family member, mentor, public servant, and most of all, a friend, will find a sweet peace and unity because we have spent this time together. So thank you, Sister Rivers and family, for I am extremely humbled to stand in this place for this task, and it's a high honor that you ask me. As I prayed about what the Lord would have me to say today, I reflected like so many others that are here today. And I do want to do this, I do want to ask all of the ministers of the gospel that are in this place, would you stand so that this family can know you're praying for them in this moment? All ministers of the gospel, amen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. As I prayed on this day about what the Lord would have me to say, I reflected like others on the many interactions I had with Brother Rivers. Often, for he and I, it was about discussing our youth or discussing young adults and the issues that were around young adults, or discussing our city and how we could help to make our community better than it always already is. I finally remember many Sundays before the pandemic when Brother and Sister Rivers would attend not just eight o'clock service or not just eleven o'clock service, but they would often attend a lightly-attended three PM healing worship service that Doc- but they would often attend a lightly attended 3:00 PM healing worship service that Dr. Jordan led. And often after that three o'clock worship service, in the next ten minutes, Brother Gator and I would seemingly solve all the problems of the world. He and I had that relationship where we would talk, and we would talk every time we saw each other. He was so kind to me, he'd always greet me and always have a word for me. And I thought about how much Brother Gator meant to so many, and I heard so many meaningful memories from others. But I have my own story of his loving spirit and his grand vision for the betterment of our society. Several years ago, before the pandemic, I was asked by a wonderful principal, middle school principal in our school system here in Savannah, to help in providing mentorship to one of our local middle schools, John Hubert Middle School. And so after serving on the school council for a few months and looking at many different options, we were presented with, the option came that we could develop what was called at that time a Christian Basketball League in conjunction with several other churches in the community. I got permission from the principal and the staff to invite all of the boys of that school who wanted to play basketball, most of whom had not made the team, that we would offer them the opportunity to play basketball. And on that first meeting, when I showed up at the school, nearly 100 middle school boys showed up in the gymnasium. That sounds good, doesn't it? What was I gonna do now? I certainly didn't have enough coaches for nearly 100 kids. It's almost impossible to keep the attention of 100 middle school boys in a gymnasium with bouncing basketballs. And on top of that, every one of these hundred little boys thought they were either LeBron James or Steph Curry. What was I gonna do? Then it hit me. I know what I'll do. I'll call the one Harlem Globetrotter I know. I'll call that Wizard of the Hardwood. I'll call that championship-winning Gator Rivers. And just like I expected when I called, he answered and he agreed to meet me at the very next gathering of those young men. I just knew when Brother Rivers showed up that day, he'd come in the gym with his red, white, and blue jacket on. I just knew that when Gator showed up that day, he would dazzle the kids with balls spinning on his finger, or throwing balls with passes behind his back, or making unbelievable half-court shots. But instead of all of that, that day when he showed up, he spent more than an hour teaching the boys what a proper stance was. How to hold and control the ball. How to make a good pass. I hope you hear me. On that day, rather than fancy footwork or highlight reel showmanship or amazing dribbling wizardry, Brother Rivers spent time, his entire time, teaching the kids basketball was not so much about putting the ball in the basket as it was about respecting the game, building character, and developing relationships with your teammates. He spent time pouring into those children what was really important. There's a passage in the 25th chapter of the Gospel of Matthew where Jesus tells the story of a man going on a journey. And before he leaves, he entrusts his wealth with his servants. To one servant, he gives one bag. To another servant, he gives two bags. To another servant, he gives five bags. And the man who received five gained five more. The man who received two gained two more. But the man who received one buried his gift, fearing what might go wrong rather than what might go right. I would have you know, on May 6, 1949, God gave a little brown baby born in Savannah, Georgia, several gifts. And that little brown baby named Larry grew up to be a man nicknamed Gator that took those gifts and valued those gifts and sharpened those gifts and then shared those gifts. Valued them, sharpened them, and shared them so much that his gifts made room for him. And he traveled to faraway lands. He entertained millions and made friends all around the world. But what was most amazing was though he was privileged to travel to Australia and Africa and Europe and Asia, and what was wonderful is that though he was able to see all of these great lands, what was most amazing is that he brought those wonderful gifts back to his home in Savannah, Georgia. And made a difference in the lives of little girls and little boys. Not just those born in mansions, but also those born in mobile homes. He dazzled not just presidents and politicians, but he played pickup games with those suffering in poverty. He was concerned not just with those in elected positions and high offices, but he was concerned and cared for those who were unemployed and uneducated and unfulfilled. And because he took the gifts he had been given and made the most of his talents, I believe that 73 years after he first received them, he heard those wonderful words, "Well done, thy good and thy faithful servant. You've been faithful over a few things, and now I will make you ruler over many things. Enter into the joy of the Lord." So yeah, Sugar Bear, somehow I believe the spirit of Brother Larry Gator Rivers is standing somewhere around God's great altar. And he's standing there with no more sickness. He's standing there with no more pain. He's standing there with no more problems of this society. But he's standing there singing, "Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Thank you, Lord, for how you lifted me. Thank you, Lord, for how you blessed me. And thank you, Lord, for allowing me to share what you've shared with me." Somewhere singing, "Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me." And while he's singing it, he's got a ball spinning on his finger. Amen. 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 Would all of the ministers that are near me, would you please stand now? Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Amen. Might we just pause for one moment? Might we pause for just one moment? The word says, "For this corruptible must put on incorruption, and this mortal must put on immortality. So when the corruptible shall have put on incorruption and the mortal shall have put on immortality, then shall be brought to pass the saying that is written, 'O death, where is thy sting? O grave, where is thy victory? The sting of death is sin, and the strength of sin is the law; but thanks be to God, who giveth us the victory through our Lord Jesus Christ.'" Therefore, my beloved brother, and be ye steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, forasmuch as ye know that your labor is not in vain in the Lord. Forasmuch as the Spirit has left this body and returned to God who gave it, we do commit this body now, earth to earth, ashes to ashes, dust to dust, looking for the general resurrection in the last day and the life of the world to come through our Lord Jesus Christ, at whose coming in glorious majesty to judge the world. The earth and sea shall give up their dead, and the corruptible bodies of those who sleep in him shall be changed and made like unto his own glorious body. Let the people of God say, "Amen. Amen." And now we will receive this parting blessing. Amen. Amen. And now may the love of God, and now may the grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and now may the sweet communion and presence of the Holy Spirit rest with you and rule with you and abide with you now henceforth and forevermore. Let every believer of God say amen. Would everyone but the family please stand? Amen. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me.